We're not live streaming already, are we? We are now? We weren't earlier, right?
No.
Okay.
You're in.
All right.
Wait, click it's on his rant and then turn it on again.
The Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting is under order. Let the record show that it is 9:00 a.m. on December the 4th. Mr. Commissioner Prince, would you care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Commissioner, I couldn't decide. Maybe it is Mr. Commissioner.
That's how you address it.
Yeah. Well, good morning. Good morning, good morning. I've had thoughts of asking people if they could remove the comma in the pledge in a public setting, if that would be appropriate or not.
Well, in this room, it's pretty much done, hasn't it?
Yeah. I'm talking about outside of this room.
Thank you.
The comma from "one nation, comma, under God."
There is no comma.
I was gonna say, there is no comma. That's the problem.
We just need to remove the pause. We say it correctly here. I'm not talking about in this meeting. I'm talking about in other meetings.
But it's taken a long time to convert this room.
And Jackie was the voice in the wilderness for the first couple of years. But she kept saying it right in my ear, and then she won me over.
Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board. Commissioner Kampa.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda? I have none.
None here.
I have an item I'd like to discuss, and I don't know if it'd be here or under Commissioner Items. I would like to recommend that we discuss and extend it off for a cleaning lady.
Okay. Let's do that under Commissioner Items.
That's a new item.
Then we're not trying to add something to an agenda without posting notice. Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? Introduction of our lone audience person this morning? Yes, you're in.
Oh, Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
Welcome. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Kanda.
Two main things since our last meeting. When was that last?
I know. Twenty-ninth, yeah.
Hard to believe. Two big deals. Authority to proceed. Kent Beach is out with the equipment out at the airport. They're breaking ground today. If he can get them all started, he said. We hit a real good cold snap. I think it was about six degrees. And that'll be the only thing that delays a full day. He's confident in making the three-week criteria that we've got him under, and we'll allow for weather as it comes up. Talked to Donna Hobby about the way to handle the payments to him so that we do the right thing legally. And we can actually, and I'll talk to Ken about it, slide it into paying next year and billing for receiving the money next year if it gets too dicey to bet on it, depending on weather and equipment. Also, working with Cheryl Trent on the strategic plan, we're gonna try not to have steady like we've had in other things, other areas. It's coming along real well. The comments have been, a lot of good people, a lot of people responded with some good suggestions on the survey. It's important, and I'll put this out, we're gonna try to advertise several times and buy some ads, and I'll have to, we'll talk about that in another meeting. We'll have to allocate a few development dollars to buy some ads for it, I think.
If I can ask a question, sir. I noticed that it is on the, the survey is already on the county website, so we're pretty well set with that survey.
Almost, yes. And there's, and we considered, there's a couple people that want to add a couple changes possibly, and we'll consider those. It will not affect, remember, this is not a statistically important survey. It is an opinion survey, so that we get the ideas from all of the county on their backgrounds and what they think's important, so that we can have that good discussion with the task force, and that's where the needle can be made. So that's one of the things I want to also point out. We need to get stuff into the businesses, hard copies of the final survey. And if we do update the questions over the next couple of days, that'll change one or two minor points in the opinion poll. So that's not a big deal according to our expert. And so that should be finalized. You can go to the website now and fill out the survey. I sure would like everybody to fill it out.
So it's up and running?
It's up and running.
It's ready, okay. Good. Glad to hear that.
And it will be put on Facebook and other media today, tomorrow. She'll be doing that this week. So take the opinion poll, it doesn't take long. And then the good news about that, too, is if we can possibly fill them out, hard copies in the stores or in the restaurants, and get them done, we'll try to get a box there to return them, and we were talking about different options will come up. Deal with that. Okay? And tonight, we have the CenturyLink and DOT meeting. This is a, it's open for discussion. It's just a workshop, basically, where the DOT hasn't been engaged physically, and that's the discussion we'll have with all three of us there, if we can make all three of us there. We're hosting the meeting for the DOT. The Forest Service will be there, and so will CenturyLink. I think there's probably gonna be one or two people from CenturyLink, is all, to discuss the options that the DOT sees reasonable. And then we will have a all-full-out-blown meeting. We'll schedule, resolve that with all the team players, including DOT, DOLA, Senator Gardner's office, the people of Wetmore, et cetera. There will be representatives from Wetmore there. Adam Rice will be there.
That's down at Wetmore at one time?
Three o'clock, three to five. I'm gonna hold everybody tight to that schedule.
You can make it.
Bob is gonna be. Bob Pfeifer is doing this on another mission that he's got to be down in Pueblo anyway, so we need to get him, we'll try to get everything finished by five, everybody out there. Should be easy. We'll see. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Commissioner Prince?
Since the last meeting, all three of us went to Denver to
I forgot about it.
Request the grant from non-defunded courthouse. I thought it went extremely well. I compliment both of you, Mr. Chairman, and for excellent presentation.
It's a great presentation.
Together. I think it was very well received. Also, I thought it was wonderful that the sheriff and both of the judges in our county were up there pitching for us. I walked away feeling very, very helpful. I also, let's see. Yesterday, we went to the, I don't know what it was. A thought of a housing meeting by the people who are doing the study. It obviously needs to be refined real well and better defined, and the results are gonna need to be better tailored for the needs that I feel that we're asking them to give us. So we have some more work on that. I'd like to recommend to fellow commissioners, we have only one applicant for a part-time cleaning person. Her name is Stephanie. Unfortunately, I don't know her last name. It would be a part-time position. My recommendation is, since we only have one applicant, she's already been vetted, fingerprinted, and Ms. Hobby feels that she meets all the criteria that we're looking for, I would like to authorize Donna to go ahead and make an offer to this lady to start ASAP. I don't think it's really fair for our county employees to be saddled with, including all their other duties, to worry about their garbage and stuff. And I appreciate everybody pitching in, but I don't want it just to linger on until it gets around to it.
How many hours?
Well, and that's the question I was about to bring up. But two questions I'd like to bring up to both of you for discussion. How many hours and what pay scale? I spoke to Donna Hobby about it, and she felt a starting pay of $14 an hour seems reasonable. She's thinking in terms of, for example, dispatchers, that's about where they are. I mean, and we could look at it at the end of six months.
How many hours a week?
And that's the question, the next question we're gonna ask. We don't have any answer to that, because the position was not a part-time position before. We've cut it down from one person doing it all. So my thought would be, you know, I'll open the discussion with a half-time person, 20 hours a week as opposed to 40, and see what you guys think about that.
Help that discussion out. How will that impact the maintenance side? Would that be a three-quarter hour? Or is it gonna? I know it is, but we're talking, we had one guy doing both jobs before.
Right.
So it's gonna make a difference on the budget somehow. Depends on what we pay the maintenance guy two years.
Right.
But we're looking at a maintenance position probably full-time, is that what?
No.
No.
Okay, so it would be a half-time. Okay, good.
We were looking at two half-time, two half-time jobs, or, I mean, if you guys decide we do a two-thirds, one-third job. I mean, to me, it would make sense, let's start with 50-50, maintenance and janitorial, and then take a look at it after a while and say, you know, we really need to adjust something here. Bless you. And so that was just, it's a thought I'm throwing out for discussion purposes.
And you looked at all the candidates?
Well, the candidates. There's only one, I'm not recommending the maintenance person, because we have two candidates. Both are qualified, so we're going to actually interview both of them.
For the custodial?
For the custodial position. For, no, the maintenance position. The custodial position is this lady named Stephanie, only candidate we have. She seems to meet all the criteria we're looking for. Donna's comfortable with her. I don't know her, but I would feel, we probably, we only have one candidate. I don't see the reason, go through a whole interview process. If she vetted out okay, and Donna's happy, I would say, let's, the three of us decide how many hours and what pay, and let's make an offer, and let's get this person here ASAP.
Okay, then one last thing, and then we can, just for the record. I know the position announcement closed on the 27th. I did have somebody ask me yesterday if they could apply, and I said, I called, we talked, I talked to Donna, that was the recommendation Tom had, see where it is. And she said, well, they're closed, so there is a person out there, so I'm just making sure everybody knows that's not available for that person.
Okay.
So.
That's good.
Donna said the
Position announcement was in, it closed on the 27th. No member, and now we only had one applicant at that time.
So my point is, I'd like to recommend to both of you that we start the janitorial person at $14 an hour, half-time, and Donna and this person could work out when the half-time is, 20 hours a week.
That's what I asked, is half-time of 20, or is it 15?
Yeah, and I
And that's a good question.
Yeah, that's what I've been sitting here thinking Half-time, if we say it's 20 hours a week, that's four hours a day to clean this courthouse.
Is that sufficient, or is it too much?
Oh, I think it's too much. Now, if that included search and rescue, going down to the airport, which we haven't had that discussion.
Periodically.
You guys had that either. Ed was cleaning the courthouse, or the airport every two weeks, and search and rescue every two weeks.
And I think that needs to remain as part of that person's duties, that is a county function, and it probably doesn't need to be as cleaned as often as, for example, the clerk's office. They don't generate the same amount of rescues.
Was Ed 30 hours?
No, he was full, well, he was full-time.
I know. Was Ed 30 hours?
Well, who knows? No. Forty-hour week.
He was on a 40-hour week, right?
He was maintenance and custodial.
I get it.
So
So So all I'm trying to do, I think maintenance would take more time personally, in the long run. Maybe not, depends on it.
Yeah. In the summer, maybe, but
So I like the half-time part. Maybe it's half-time of 30 hours, maybe it's a custodial to start with, until we see.
Technically, to me, half-time is 20 hours, 'cause full-time's 40.
That's the way I
So it's either part-time or half-time. I just
But don't we have 40?
Personally?
Don't we have 30-hour full-time employees?
It's gotta be $32 to be full.
Okay.
Ed was full.
I would be generic.
Yeah.
Okay, so
All right, be specific.
My recommendation would be 20 hours a week for the ma, for the, excuse me, the cleaning person. We'll come back once we talk to the folks, the two gentlemen who are interested in the maintenance position.
I'm not worried about maintenance.
So let's just talk about the janitorial. I would suspect if we hired them at 20 hours a week, including the auxiliary sites, we could truly expect them to do a bang-up job and say, we feel you have sufficient time to do these things, that if there's a complaint that the floors are sticky in the clerk's office and they're not being mopped properly, I'm not picking on the clerk, of course, but I mean, you know, we could say to this person, you have enough hours to do this, you need to get your job done right, if that becomes an issue.
I know we asked E to do this. Do we need to see the resume, Tom, before we go on?
I don't. I was
We're gonna trust the commissioner from District
Yeah, I mean, you guys trusted me, and look what happened, so.
Yeah, that's
But we're doing
Yeah, we're doing
I thought I did great.
Yeah, I just
Okay, I move, we accept your recommendation.
If we had a choice of multiple people, I would feel much differently. We have one qualified candidate, no one else.
And if it blows out, we can always not, we can discontinue at some point.
Exactly.
So I'm good with moving to accept your recommendation to hire your interviewee at 20 hours a week, to start off at $14 bucks an hour.
Okay.
And so if there's a second, I got one other thing for discussion.
I'll second it. Go discuss. Been moving seconded to offer a position for the custodial at 20 hours a week, $14 an hour. Discussion.
Okay, so if that's the case, to include auxiliary buildings, and to me, that's everything. That would be the VA building, EMS, the sheriff.
No, not sheriff.
Trying to get it all
So it'll be VSO, search and rescue, airport, and county building.
Yes.
And the airport, okay. And then I would also want to make sure we take a look, and, 'cause I was with our initial discussion, I think that may be too many hours for, until we see how it works, that we be able to change those hours as we need, as needed, to make it equitable.
I think we probably ought to, I'll ask Donna to include that in the offer, that the hours are subject to be adjusted based upon
So that there's no surprise.
The workload and the
Right.
Okay.
Because that could be too offensive.
And what did you add? Airport?
VSO.
VSO.
Search and rescue, SAR.
VSO typically, Ed was cleaning that once a week, and search and rescue, and the airport was twice a month.
Did he go to Wetmore?
No.
Uh, he did, but not, not routine cleaning. He went down there more for maintenance.
Did he go down for Rusty's hole?
No, nobody goes down
I had to go in there.
Yeah, I agree. I believe 20 hours is more than sufficient, but I'm willing to support this motion as long as Donna indicates to that person that it's subject to change, yeah. And would you touch base with her again about the three auxiliary buildings and the frequency?
I'm gonna go talk to Mrs. Ward, I'll let her lay out.
'Cause I think they get enough foot traffic. My gosh, yesterday, that parking lot for VSO was full all day long. So I think once a week
And if VSO needs more than once a week? I mean, if they're gonna have to adjust to the needs?
I mean, the coverage could change within that 20 hours.
Correct.
We could say, instead of once a week, we need you over there three times a week, and you make it fit.
Correct.
That can influence on the weather, too.
Yeah, that's right.
If you've got mud or
Yeah. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing no, proceed to vote. All in favor of authorizing Mrs. Hobby to extend the contract offer for
At will.
Sorry.
At-will employee.
It's at-will employee, at-will contract
Thank you.
For custodial, for 20 hours a week, $14 an hour. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose name. Motion carries?
That's the caveat.
That'll be great. Starting as soon as possible, you said, so we hope, maybe Monday or this week.
That we don't know. We have to get together with that person, see when they can start.
Now, just another question. Whose job is it to shovel the sidewalks? Maintenance or custodial?
Chairman.
No, that's
Who shoveled them this time? Do we ever find out?
Oh, I think Mr. Prince is accurate when he said chairman. Yeah, I agree with you. I don't know, I'm asking in seriousness, should that be a custodial, or should that be a maintenance?
I think it's, personally, it would seem like a maintenance job to me.
It is.
That's how I would feel, but I'm hoping that it discussion.
No, that's fine. I just see if we need to include that in this job description.
I think this job description is inside cleaning, and the other is maintenance and outside.
Very good. All right.
So you still gotta continue to shovel.
And the custodial's sort of minor.
It's not gonna snow anymore.
I would like the chair to continue to do the shoveling, since he does such a good job shoveling.
Before, you can do that before meetings for strategy kinds of
And we are, we all work, just as an FYI, we all work diligently to get both of the candidates for the custodial positions, excuse me, maintenance position in it. I want to move and call it as quickly as we can.
Yes. Okay. Anything else, sir, in your reports?
No.
Okay. I've got a few things, just go through them quickly. After our last BOCC meeting on the 29th, I met with the staff during the staff report as a representative from the board. I thought we had a pretty good staff report. It talked about various things. I encouraged all of our county employees to get involved and help us with this economic development strategic plan survey. So we had a pretty good discussion about that, and the implications of whether or not we get people's input. And that was really the big push there. So had a, had a good staff report. The Christmas party is moving forward. A date has been selected but not confirmed with the host restaurant, so we're waiting on that to find out exactly. I wanted to let you know, if you haven't heard, Cleo Daye, former two-term commissioner, passed away last Friday. Her service will be in Kane City this Saturday at 10:00 at the Evangelical Free Church on the south side of Highway 50 going in, kind of west of Home Depot, on past Home Depot in there. So I would encourage the three of us to attend that if it's at all possible. She certainly gave eight years of service to this county, so I think it would be nice if we could represent the county there. So I can pursue that address if you guys need it.
I would like it.
I have it.
Do you?
It was in that email that I sent.
Oh, it was in that email?
Oh, yes.
It's right across, Kevin said it's right across from the abbey.
That's right, the abbey.
Ah, good.
Yeah.
It's on the south side?
Yeah, south side of the highway. So, okay, very good. If we could do that, I think that would be very cool. And obviously, her son is a county employee, and I think it would mean a lot to him if he were there. I wanted to publicly thank the Road and Bridge Department for sending over a front-end loader yesterday to plow. I mean, that was great. I know it's like, well, that's what we do, but we appreciate it. It was nice to have
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes.
Whoever did it also put a line of sand
Yeah, somebody come by and sanded it. That was really nice.
And that was really nice. We've never had that before, and I don't know how many people have
This time, she did not sit on the ground.
I did not. I stood up, I went way across there.
I'll have to carry the day's bills for that when he's out in that plow truck and tries to come through.
Yeah, that was nice. I noticed that when I came back, and I spoke to Sean yesterday morning while he was here and asked him if he could just make a couple swipes down by the sheriff's office, 'cause we failed to do that last time. He was more than happy to do it, so it worked out great. But thank you. Just another quick item, gentlemen. A landowner down in Wetmore came into Jackie's office requesting an extension, a one-year extension on a building permit. She had granted him a six-month extension and, for free, no charge, and then had also granted a two-year extension, and he paid for that extension on building the house in Wetmore.
That was two and a half years ago.
Yeah. And so he came in yesterday to visit with me a little bit. Jackie had instructed him, hey, if you want anything different than what is normally on the docket for you next, you probably need to talk to the commissioners. He came in, wanted to know if he needed to get on the agenda, so I had a conversation with him, and subsequently this morning, talked to Jackie about that. I said, I'm not gonna, I'll present this to the commissioners, but certainly, I'm not gonna make any decisions on their behalf, and we wouldn't probably make a decision without talking to Jackie Hobby in the first place, so
Has he done anything?
And Jackie, yeah, he's got the, he's a two-story house, 2,500 square feet roughly. He's got the bottom floor dried in, and so he wanted, he asked Jackie if he could get a one-year extension. And Jackie said, no, we don't have one-year extensions. I can give you a six-month extension for no charge, which she already has, or two-year extensions at 35 cents a square foot. So Jackie said she would be willing to grant him another six-month extension, no charge, trying to meet him halfway, or pay another 35 cents a square foot and have a two-year extension. So if it's all right with you, gentlemen, I told Jackie, if it was by consensus, then I would reach back out to him and give him those two options.
Only thing, giving him, when's the extension start now?
Uh, yeah, whenever we would, Jackie would officially notify.
I wonder, so he's got, he hasn't got it dried in? It's just
Uh, I can't answer that for sure, whether he's got the bottom floor dried in.
Giving him an extension three months from there.
No, it would start whenever she
Know what I mean now? He's not gonna get much done.
No, that's true.
But he's already paid.
But he's requested, sorry.
But he's already paid for two.
Yes. Came and went.
Sure, I understand that. The time expired. If he's paid twice, I'm not gonna have a problem giving him an extension at all.
Not now.
For six months.
We'll see what he does, and then, because, you know, you don't have much time to work on it.
Right. Yeah, and that's, and he said, hey, Tom, if I need to pay the 980 bucks, whatever it is, for another two-year extension, I'll do it. He said, I just, I'm not, I'm not gonna need that much time, but he said, that's what we need to do.
Give him a chance to see how the spring treats him.
Yeah, he was reasonable. He wasn't in here pounding on the table. And so, Jackie thought if we can meet him halfway and give him another six-month extension, no charge, that's up to you guys, or if you wanna hold the line and do it to the end.
I'm fine with that. She's already paid twice to get the same thing.
Right. Yeah, he paid his original permit and then paid for another extension. Okay, all right, well, I'll reach back out to him via phone and let him know, and then he can get in contact with Jackie. So, I think that's probably it for my staff report. So, we'll move on. Attorney, or my commissioner report, attorney items.
Um, usual stuff, worked with Jackie and a couple of things since our last meeting.
Are you okay?
Pardon?
Are you okay?
Am I okay after meeting with Jackie? I'm used to getting chewed on by women. Anyway, at our last meeting, we had the, you approved the name change for the, from Rice Road to those three different roads. So, I prepared a proposed resolution. However, I do have one question on this. If you note the documents that they, they submitted, two documents. One was a document where all the property owners signed, and in that, they referred to the roads as Sage Corners, Wildflower Lane, and Valley View Drive. But the sub, the plat they actually submitted with the names written in didn't have Valley View Drive. They just called it Valley View. So, that's how I prepared, well, that's how I prepared the resolution.
And he did say that it wasn't Drive, it was just Valley View.
Okay, if that's correct, then, then the resolution is okay the way it stands.
I thought they, yeah.
There's a duplicate of name.
And I thought that's why he wanted to add either Road or Drive, because there was already a Valley View.
There's a Valley View something, unless it's a Valley View Lane.
Can we call him real quick?
I've got it in my, I've got it in my notes, sir.
They had it on this map as Valley View Drive.
On, okay, the one that was, the one I looked at, that little.
And the little one we got is Valley View.
All right. If it's Drive, then if Brenda can just put the word Drive in on the resolution.
That needs to be in.
And if it looks okay otherwise, I'd recommend that you go ahead and sign it.
He is at house.
The motion wa, that was voted on and approved included the words Valley View Drive.
Well fought.
So, can you redo it, Brenda, to put Valley View Drive in there for the name of that road?
Okay, yes, I can.
I think it appears two places.
Okay, so if we vote on this resolution today, we'll vote on it as amended to Valley View Drive, is that correct? On the resolution?
She, she can have it printed out for your signature right away. That's something that has to be changed.
Okay, are we prepared to do that? Is that your intent, sir?
Uh, it's my recommendation, if you're satisfied with the proposed resolution.
I'll move that we approve Resolution 18 dash 27, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Costa County changing the name of certain county roads. I didn't say anything wrong with the resolution.
Okay, I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 18 dash 27 entitled a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Costa County changing the name of certain county roads. Discussion. I found it interesting when I saw this resolution that said of certain county roads versus Rice Road. Was there a reason for that?
Um, I guess because Rice Road is really three roads, so I wanted, that's why I made it plural that way, but it could be, changes to Rice Road. And it doesn't change the substance of what you agreed to do.
Rice Road actually was branched into several roads.
Right, yeah, okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. We will adopt, Resolution 18 dash 27 has been adopted. And we will sign, let's see, all three of us are signatories on that, so we will get that going. Thank you, sir, for that. Anything else?
Um, no, that's all I had for today.
All right, well, thank you for doing that. I believe tomorrow, we're on schedule to look at some other resolutions, correct?
Uh, there's an ordinance out for tomorrow, yes, which is a little bit different procedure.
Okay, yeah.
If you do want to go forward with it, then there's a first reading, which usually I'd read it in its entirety. It's a fairly short one. I, our open burn, burning ordinance was pages and pages. That took forever to read that one, but this one is short.
Okay, good. Administrative assistant?
Um, I just wanted to speak briefly about Commissioner Flower and I spoke about it this morning, but the, um, the letters that'll go out for the bid for the legal publications that I sent you yesterday. So, I added that to tomorrow's agenda because I frankly forgot. So, we need to get it done before the end of December, so the two newspapers can get their bids in for legal publication, so.
And we'll deal with that at one of our first two meetings in January?
Um, I think I have it as on the 31st of December.
Oh, okay.
In that letter. I don't know if you had a chance to, because I sent it at the end of the day yesterday.
I thought that was decided in that, during, when we appoint, when we make all the appointments.
Well, the procedure is that the bids are opened in red, but no action is taken.
Yeah, until.
I was thinking about the action of approving. It would be in January. Okay, yeah. Yeah, so we can act on that tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and you are preparing a new resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Good. Public comment?
Nothing yet.
Would we like to comment on his ringtone?
That's Rusty, stockbroker.
Right. Okay, uh, we'll move on.
He's gonna lose his place.
Since he stepped out for, yeah, since he stepped out to answer the phone, would, gentlemen, would you concur to move forward with Road and Bridge?
Why not?
I like it.
He's coming back.
If he's coming in, he's.
No, he left. He must not want to.
Very rusty. He almost lost his place.
Trying to shut it off.
Did you have one foot in the door the whole time? Sorry, Mr. Road and Bridge.
You didn't move faster.
Right, had you been up here?
I thought he'd sneak in front of me.
Yeah, Rusty, we're gonna sign this document real quick too, so I don't mean to be distracted, but.
But he is.
Want you to know.
The official pin.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Sneak ink.
How are you?
Okay.
Good.
Cold?
Yeah. Little chilly, little chilly. Uh, let me pull up the document.
Have you seen an increase in residential upticks as the Oak P. Barrow situation?
Yeah, there's more customers coming out, for sure.
Probably, yeah.
What's going on with that?
Well, they're having injunction filed against P. Bar O.
Right.
To cease.
Page one?
I do. Sorry. Until their court hearing, which was supposed to be yesterday, and then they postponed it till next Monday, correct?
I think it's the 8th.
The 8th. Oh, is it the 8th?
We have it on there.
What is the 8th? Monday?
Looks like it's Saturday. What kind of a deal is that?
Wait, 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 I got it here.
Not the 8th?
No, I didn't.
Nah, the 9th is Sunday.
Yeah.
Not the 8th.
I was told it was the 10th or the Monday, but.
I thought it was the 12th.
So, anyway, all right.
Anyway, it's delayed, uh, in the meantime, people are delivering their garbage, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay, too.
Another cat's skin, another day, I guess, so, all right, sir, well.
Uh, this is through November, and we still have December, we're at 205, 792, so it's a pretty good uptick from last year's total of 182.
Wow.
So, we'll do another probably 14,000 or 15,000 in December.
17, could be 30, 35,000, huh? Above last year. So, is that because of such great management, or?
Yes.
Yes.
If you don't jump on that, that's, that's up to you. Yeah, well, good. What would you contribute that to, really? Increase in business overall, or?
Cardboard.
I just think that there's just that many more people moving in, into the county. Because I can go through those sheets that people, we have people sign in when they come in, and I can look at those at the end of the day and, you know, no one or two.
Not recognized at all.
Out of 50 people, you know, it's pretty amazing.
Um, received an email this week from recycle people, and they said the, the state recycle average is like 13% of the population participate or something. She said, we're above that as a county at 15, almost 16%. Thought that was kind of interesting.
Yeah.
I can't find it right now, but.
That come from Bethland's?
Uh, no, um.
I didn't see it.
It wasn't, I don't think it was from Jody Liebman, but it might have been, I'm not sure. Uh, no big deal, just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, so, uh, what, the only thing you are recycling, as I understand it, is cardboard at the landfill, or no?
Yeah, cardboard.
Plastic?
No, plastic.
Glass?
Magazines, glass.
Brown and clear?
Metal.
Metal, aluminum, paper, plastic bags. We can't do anything with them anymore, so we just, we still take them in our bin out there, and then we'll just bury them when that bin's full, because there's no way to get rid of them, so.
So, if people wanted to recycle anything, they can bring it to you, just knowing that the plastic's not going to be recycled. Brown glass you would recycle, clear glass, metal.
Tin cans, aluminum.
And of course, cardboard and paper.
Cardboard, metal, aluminum.
What are we doing about electronics, you know, use computers and stuff like that? I know we don't take them, where are we sending people with those? Because I believe.
Old disposal.
I think they stopped taking them, too.
No, they'll take them. I was out there and they, but they recommend.
I know it's plastic, they're not taking.
But the first thing they'll tell you is, take them to Pueblo, because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Buy a bunch.
Okay.
Old disposal charges.
35 bucks to haul it down there, and you can take it down and drop it off yourself and pay five.
Hmm.
Like a plan, thank you.
You do not take electronics.
No.
White goods you do, refrigerators have to be gray.
Right.
And.
Well, you know, Rusty, but that's a good thought, just for tag onto that. If, uh, if there was a reason for you to truck down to Pueblo once in a while with a handful of computers, it might pay for the trip you're going down on, because we could charge 20 bucks or whatever it is. 15 bucks profit, pay for some gas, if there's a way to handle that without a lot of hassle. Because I know it's discouraging to me when I go out there to drop something off and I gotta take it back with me. Sometimes people pitch it out and not wanna go, and then they go to Oak and say, these are too expensive. Something to think about, another money raiser.
Electronics and those kind of things, that's a problem.
And they take it down to, I don't remember the name of the American whatever it is down there on Fourth Street off of Fourth on the other side of 96.
Americans too, or American recycling.
Might, might wanna consider that as something later to.
Yeah.
Make a buck, pay for something, you're gonna go down for a part.
Someplace to put it in.
Sure, you get a.
A shed or something, or we could put that kind of thing in.
Or a mobile thing on wheels.
Yeah, just a dedicated trailer.
You're not gonna get a lot, you know, TV or two once in a while. But that would, if you're going down for parts, you know, drop it on.
I wonder if you took a trailer down there full, if you could just run it across the scales and.
You can do it.
You'd hate to have to take each piece out.
They wait.
You want me to follow up?
I've been there, done.
American recycling?
Yeah, if that's.
Do you wanna follow up?
Doesn't matter, I can, but I, I have, I'm just telling you that that's the process, and they will run you over the scale, and you just throw everything out that you want to. All metals, you can, you can throw them in a separate pile.
Mm-hmm.
So, something to think about.
Yeah.
You know, make a few bucks. Be happier, too, you'd have a happier customer leaving the place, knowing he doesn't have to haul everything he wanted to get out.
The only problem would be, as you said, trying to come up with somewhere to put that stuff that you don't have to keep handling it.
Right.
It'd be nice to just have a dedicated trailer sitting out there.
A little trailer sitting there.
Even if it was a container that we could pick up and set on a trailer, huh?
Yeah, you could do that, or you could get an old U-Haul trailer that somebody.
That'd work, too.
An old dumpster, you know, like a.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to be a 30-some yard dumpster, but.
Doesn't have to be very big.
We might be surprised at how.
Might get popular and all of a sudden.
Yeah, some of those old TVs are pretty good size, you know, we still have the back.
Yeah, the old, old ones that are finally giving up the ghost.
Well, I'll snoop around on that and see if we can't come up with something.
I'm looking out for Jackie, not being discouraged at the dump anymore.
Do you take furniture?
Furniture? Yeah, couches, mattresses.
Yeah.
You charge extra, no?
Um, mattresses are an extra five, and couches are 10 or 15, depending on if they gotta sleep. Hide in, hide in bed, whatever they are.
Okay, good. Okay.
Hey, I had a.
Because that's just unimpactable things that are taking up landfill space, so.
So, Rusty, I had a citizen, another one of your customers, I talked to you recently about where they've been, that they've been hearing that the, we have big, we're gonna expand the, you know, develop the pits out there and all that, concerned about groundwater, and I told him, well, not to worry, we're monitoring those babies. And in addition, the new pits will be plastic lined for whatever, you know, a thousand years from now, those grand kids can worry about what the groundwater effect is. So, I seemed to pacify him a little bit. You recall that conversation with one of the landowners next to you out there?
Yeah, I know who you're talking about.
So.
He has a well that we want, he wants us to go look at.
Yeah, so, you know, and I think he was confused where the monitoring wells are, but I told him the ground flow underneath there, according to the testing we've all seen, goes to the south and down. It's not gonna hit him.
Right, right.
Did you tell him that?
No, because I haven't talked to him for a while.
It might be a good idea, even just be aware of it.
Good. Okay, anything else, sir?
Uh, I don't think so.
Truck yet?
No, they're building it.
Okay.
Cheaper than going to Idaho or somewhere and picking one up, so.
Just curious if he had.
I'm not in a hurry, just.
Man, when you first came to us, it sounded like you were on your. I had tears in my eyes.
I was, but they slowed me down when they started throwing numbers my way.
Reality.
I was crying.
All right, very good, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Come back any time.
All righty.
Thanks.
Good news coming with these numbers. Good number right there.
Yeah.
Nice increase.
Pays for Tom's pay raise.
Has increased.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Gary, good morning, sir. How are you?
Good. How are you, Gary? How are you?
Good morning, sir. Good to see ya.
Good to see you again. My hands are colder than.
And I tried to warm him up before I come up.
Yeah, what are you gonna do?
Poor blood circulation.
My wife compliments you every time she drives across Hermann Bridge Road. She loves that width, you know.
I love driving across it myself.
But it's substantially wider, isn't it, would you say?
Yeah, you need to come in the tennis, not that much further out.
Yeah, before, the driving surface kinda dropped off, and then leveled to the hub garden and dropped off again. Now, it's just kind of a gradual flow, so, much better.
Yeah, good. Okay.
You still got rails to put on that bridge?
Nope.
No, they're all up.
Looked, looked pretty good. Looks like it was complete.
Yeah, yeah, that part's all done now. Just a little bit of fence work to do.
And to that vein, and maybe you were gonna talk about that, uh, we were under budget on that project. Do you anticipate us still staying under budget after you finish the fencing?
Yeah, we're probably 34,000 under budget, and I'm anticipating less than 1,000 for the fencing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not very much stuff that we have, so.
You know, I'm just, I just don't think we're tooting our horn near enough on this project coming in under budget, under schedule. If it was the opposite, we would hear about it, you know? And I just don't think we're, we're doing a good enough job of thanking the employees and yourself for making that happen.
It is, it might be.
Oh, it is? Under budget, I mean.
Yeah, it was. Also, we got a lot of compliments on water in the roads now, keeping the dust down when we had the detour. It was handled really well.
Yeah, you know, the whole thing overall, I mean, I couldn't be more pleased with it.
Yeah.
It worked well, you know, I was a little anxious about, you know, the crane part of it.
Hanging it.
Well, and then transporting it over there and having enough cribbage underneath of Well, and then transporting it over there and having enough cribbage underneath of it to support it to where something didn't fail, you know, and.
The county spent a few bucks and put a, just a small square ad in both newspapers going, "The Board of County Commissioners commends road to bridge for coming in under budget on time for an excellent job on Herbert Bridge." That way the public knows what we did and the employees know that we really cared. I mean, I know you relay that to them, but, I mean, it's important for them to know that they did an exemplary job. But I'd like the public to know that too. I mean, maybe we should do this in ad as opposed to just asking.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, it's a bit of good news.
It is, that's what I'm getting.
Just put a headline, "Good news!"
Spending more than we thought we were going to and now it's good to spend.
Well, yeah, typically we're always grouse about it when it's over budget and over schedule and we have an opportunity that it's neither one of those.
Well, and the other good part that people lose track of is that allowed extra money and that money gets put into getting your, your roads potentially a little more chipsey, a little more whatever we're gonna do with it. So that's the good news part.
Somebody asked me if I, uh, made you three aware when we transported that over there and cleaned it in the place and I said, "No," I.
Need any more help than you.
Well, I, you know, I wasn't a hundred. I wasn't a hundred percent confident everything was gonna go as planned, so the last, you know, the last.
You didn't need us watching it tip off of that trailer.
Yeah, the last audience I had, yeah.
Well, I think we were when you were gonna do it, but, uh, I was out of town anyway, meeting, so.
You know, if, if I'd have known it was gonna go as well as you did, I didn't, I didn't invite the general public.
Get the papers out there, take a picture.
Well, I, I like your suggestion, Commissioner Prince, and I'll pursue that with consensus of the board, uh, get something formalized into the papers.
We got to do that.
Cause I, I just think.
Right.
We, you know, all of us would be grouse and if it wasn't what it is and we need to be congratulatory when it does happen.
Yeah, we're C.D.O., we're taking example from.
Yeah, no kidding.
For the money that.
Figure out how to spend more money.
They would, yeah, they would.
Glad we didn't go there.
Oh, gosh.
Cost more and got less.
Yeah.
What else you got, sir?
We did replace a cattle guard over here on the north end of Wyegle, right off of Elkhorn. That thing, um, is only fifteen and a half foot wide and it carries, you know.
A lot of traffic.
Yeah, so, anyway, we built a cattle guard. I priced those things and to buy one and go get it, it's over five thousand dollars, so, um, we just built it and I bought the materials for a little over two, so.
Wow.
You know, this time of year it gives our guys something to do in the shop.
And you had that on your work plan, but it's actually work completed then, huh?
Yeah, it is completed.
Okay.
Um, and then we've got a couple more that probably ought to be replaced. So I bought enough materials to go ahead and build a couple more and then we'll find a place for them.
Um, you're hauling road base, uh, you're gonna haul some out to, uh, re, uh, Elze Lake, where I came around the county road number above me. We had a call, remember, the, uh, when that, uh, when they're grinding the timber out of there, making chips and all the, all the road base got pushed out of there and the dust down.
Yeah, Rod, I haven't looked at it. Roger took a blade out there and did some work on it.
You can't blade it.
Yeah.
You'll go out and take a look.
I should go and take a look.
They've been real patient out there, nobody's really beating me up, but I've driven that quite a bit and it aids it.
It's still, okay, even after he worked on it, okay. I'll, I'll get out there and look at it today.
It won't stay, it won't. Take a look.
Okay. Yeah, we're, what we're doing is, you know, when we get snow like this, we have areas in the open where it gets melted off pretty quick. That's where we try and haul, like Airport Road.
Yeah, dry.
And then we'll haul on it until some of these side roads that are shaded get, that need road base, they get melted off where our trucks won't slip when we go to haul on them and then we'll haul on them.
That's dry out there.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, we definitely will get out there if it needs some road base on them. But this time, you know, over the summer, we didn't have time to haul road base. We were busy plating the roads because of the dry conditions.
Trying to keep up with it.
Yeah, now's a good time for us to do that, unless the temperatures drop to the, you know, to the low that they did last night and then what happens is that road base is warm and it's got a little moisture in it.
Then it freezes and it's hard to.
Yeah, it'll freeze up and then.
You can't dump it.
No, I won't dump. So, you know, if it gets up to fifteen, twenty degrees, we can haul with no problem, but it's gotta get up to that. When it gets over, you know, down to ten below overnight, it's gonna be mid-morning or later before we can do anything for hauling, so. And the roads have gotta be safe to travel on for these big trucks too, so I think we'll be able to haul again in the morning.
Keeping a safety meetings going and, you know, scheduling all that?
Yeah. We weren't able to have one yesterday because of the snow right now, but, you know, unless something prevents us, we're doing them every morning, Monday morning, so.
Excellent.
Good.
And you're. What do you need to tell us that we're not seeing on the report? Is there anything anomalous going on, any major breakdown, any bits of funds that we don't know about?
No, we did have one situation out here on County Route two sixty-four and this happened about eight or ten weeks ago, a cattle guard got cleaned and unfortunately there was a phone line that ran right underneath that cattle guard. We've got a locator that we use to make sure that we're not gonna interfere with any public utilities and unfortunately it wasn't working right and these guys didn't know that phone line was under there and we kinda fault, um, Century Link for having it and the location they did, but nevertheless, they're gonna try and bill us for that repair.
Where, down here?
No, it was out on two sixty-four, right off of two sixty, well, actually, it's two fifty-four, right off of Oak Creek.
Or did he hit it on the side there?
No, it was actually running the material.
Metal?
Yeah, right down the middle. Like, if the cattle guard run lengthways like this, it was running parallel with them. Unfortunately, they're per, in some unfortunate locations for us.
Well, he wouldn't, did you call for an eight-one-one?
That's just it, yeah. I wasn't around and it didn't happen, so we've got a new policy. Anytime we break the surface of the ground, we're calling eight-one-one.
Well, we could maybe talk to Century Link people this afternoon down at Whitmore.
We got the director of the whole state of Colorado's gonna be there, so.
Wouldn't do the same person you're probably dealing with, but we could put a bug in his ear. What do you suppose that bill would look like?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure.
Two hundred bucks?
No.
More than that.
You know, because they call out an emergency crew to get people back online again, so it's gonna be quite a bit. I bet it'd be a couple thousand. And I'm just on notice that we may get billed for it. I haven't seen anything yet, so.
Well, we won't make a big statement about it yet, but if we need to, we can certainly reach out to Century Link.
Yeah, it's just something that, um, needs to be done as far as doing the eight-one-one call. I'd do it on the computer and I'm gonna take a class in January where I won't even have to deal with eight-one-one. I'll just, I'll, I'll cut out the middleman, the eight-one-one service, and then I can do the eight-one-one mapping and everything myself, so. We're gonna install some posts down in the valley for these road name signs. I did all the eight-on-ones for it. We'll probably try and get some of those in today.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, we're in the process of making the signs right now and we're gonna install some of the posts.
Good.
Get about ten or twelve locations down and then move on to the next ten or twelve.
Good.
We'll do them in phases.
Uh, we've had a discussion at a previous commissioner meeting about adding three signs on three state highways that basically say Custer County, a right to ranch county. I'm assuming we can put those on existing sign, uh, signposts. Um, we haven't taken action on that, uh, still kind of in the research process of that, but.
You're talking about county sign?
County, yeah.
Welcome to Custer County, is that what you got in mind?
Well, no, just Custer County, a right to ranch county.
Like at the county line coming in?
Major road.
Yeah, it, um.
That probably, in order to be big enough to be meaningful, you might need two posts.
Yeah, probably so, and then if it's gonna be on state right of way, we have to go through C.D.O. and if you don't put it on state, state right of way, it's back off so far, it's not.
But we got all, the state right of way has all these goofy, I mean, bishop castles on there.
Yeah, I don't think it would be any issue. We just have to go through them before anything like that got done. Yeah, I, I doubt they'd have an issue with it. They like to pinpoint where it goes so that.
It's making the sign though.
Well, we're still, Colorado barricade's gonna give us a bid, uh, but we haven't made that decision.
You don't have an idea how big it's gonna be yet or how it looks. I like the, you know, I like the idea, uh, but I'd put a, you know, why not say welcome?
Well, yeah, I was hoping that we could piggyback off of the signpost at the Custer County line signs.
You're putting another wind load on it.
Right.
Yeah, that's an issue there. It kinda depends on the size of the existing sign and, you know, the location and if it catches much wind and things like that.
I'm speaking just flow, flowing here, but I don't, you know, if it costs a little extra money, you're not, who's gonna do it? It's worth, uh, I mean, tooting our horn and, you know, that's why you say.
And sometimes they prefer to do it themselves. I know that when we put, uh, one of the signs put up down at Whitmore that, uh, you know, this area prone, prone to flash flooding, they actually put them up for us. I supplied them with a sign and then they.
I may talk to them today about that while we're down there. Our C.D.O., if they'll do it, if we provide the sign, if they would install them or what.
And if not, we've got an order, we can.
And I've seen them with the two posts with the C.D.O. blue, you know, they're, they put them up.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they'd have a problem with it.
Okay, good.
What have we accomplished, Tom?
Uh, it's just a promotion of the right to ranch agricultural heritage in our county, yep. Yep, I guess it could be informational to some point, but.
I mean, it doesn't say, "Look out for, you know, cattle on the road."
No, it's just, just a statement that we are a right to ranch. If there are cattle on the road and you think that's highly unusual, well, we are a right to ranch county.
And you'll see.
They won't know that. It would inform them of that.
Are there counties where it's not with a cattle? I thought Colorado was a right to ranch state.
It is.
So, I mean, it's nice to put on, they remind people that the cows have the right of way, not you, but Custer County's not unique in that.
No, no, there are just not many counties that advertise that.
I don't have a problem with it. I think that's our heritage and it's fine. I was just curious.
Hi, speaking of that, I was just thinking about that Herbert Bridge again, um, I think I'm gonna see if I can find a vendor, uh, someone to make an aluminum date plate for that thing. Cause, you know, a modern structure like that ought to have the installation date on it and things like that.
And the GPS coordinates.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to, we could put them on there, but it's, it's a good idea, cause that thing is, I mean, it, it sure is not a bad idea to have the installation date on there, so.
But, yeah.
I'm gonna see about.
Sixty years from now, the Gary Hyde Memorial Group comes out. Wonder when it was put in, who's Gary Hyde?
Yeah. Who's that guy?
Herbert, I heard.
Yeah. Herbert lived under that brick.
Ground down to the gold, yeah.
Probably panning for gold right here.
He lived under the Herbert Bridge. Anything else, sir?
Just one other mention. I was gonna, I had planned on going to Kevin's mom's service Saturday, cause those are those events that I try to attend, but I had a coworker back in Kansas that passed away and his funeral's on that same day, so I'm gonna travel back to that one, so that's the reason I won't be at that funeral, otherwise I would be.
Have you talked to, uh, Kevin about that? He knows.
No, I need to let him know that I'm gonna be gone.
It'd be nice if you would, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, well, I think the three of us are planning on attending, so.
Yeah, I would normally, yeah.
Okay, alright, sir.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Have a great day today, buddy.
You too.
Tell those guys we appreciate their work.
I will. See you, Kelly.
See you, Greg.
Um, Public Health is not next, but we received a text from her this morning. She's under the weather. I didn't read the entire thing, let me look at it real quick. I know Brenda has, but, uh, I don't believe she's gonna make it in.
She's not.
So, uh, she's at home. She had any questions about her report, uh, we can give her a call, so maybe we should look at that while we're waiting on Human Services.
We have a lease agreement that we need to.
Yes.
I assume counsel, you looked at that?
I did.
Any issues, sir?
No, I didn't see anything.
You interrupt you. Yeah, I assume that's exactly what you were gonna ask me, right?
Exactly what I said, any issues?
Yeah.
No, I read it, I, I mean, that's a little bit just very standard.
You know, initially, well, we can talk about it. Uh, I would move that we approve the lease agreement, uh, between the county and the West Custer County Hospital.
I second it, good to me.
Move to second it to approve the lease agreement with the Custer County Medical Center. Discussion.
Um, Alex, just a comment. We haven't paid for the services before.
Right.
But it is appropriate, in my opinion, that we do pay them, we are using their services. This will save the county a huge amount of money by entering this lease as opposed to leasing a separate entity and putting in all the infrastructure, phones, heat and all the rest of that. So, uh, I just think this is a good deal and I appreciate both entities.
Who's signing this for?
We're in the middle of a motion here. You're welcome to sit down. I just wanted you to know, uh, we decided to deal with a piece of business while we're waiting.
But it's good to see ya.
Um, Alyssa Leibengood is the signatory on behalf of the county and Lisa Drew on behalf of the medical clinic, so the commissioners do not have a signature line on this document. Yeah, I agree, Commissioner Prince. I, initially, when this first came to the surface, I thought, well, let's just go find a place and it didn't take long to realize by the time we just meet the minimum stuff, technology, uh, I think this is the route to go myself, so.
It's not a big, bad one.
Alright, further discussion, uh, comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Uh, we will instruct Mrs. Leibengood to sign on behalf of the county's release agreement. Uh, Ms. Brenda, do you have a hard copy of that?
I do.
Okay, well, you can shoot that back to her or, we don't need to sign it.
No, I'll just let her know that you've recorded.
Okay, cause just her and Lisa are the only.
Where do you record it? Where are you gonna keep it? Never had one.
Uh, just, it just gets filed in our office, my office.
Okay, good. Good morning.
It's not under, in the vault, under the lock?
It is in the vault.
Oh, okay, well, that's what I thought. It had to be in the vault.
Good morning, good morning, how are ya?
Good morning.
Have you warmed up in there? I didn't.
It was fifty-eight this morning, so it's coming up. Myander Cole, um, yeah, it's cold, it's coming.
How's it coming up? You got ten heaters in?
We have two.
Yeah.
We have two. We have one, Stacy has one back in her office and then Kayla has one. So, the one that Kayla has is back where the thermometer is, so I'm watching that and I'm like, huh, well, that's it, no, because I'm, I'm looking at that and going, cause we have two, and I'm like, okay, well, that's because hers is, he's coming from that one, but it was like sixty-two. It's coming up a bit, but Mario came by yesterday afternoon and said he was just waiting for that part.
Right.
So hopefully it's gonna be in today.
So, gentlemen, we have a motor that's froze up on the heating unit up, up on the roof and Mario was aware of it. He had, uh, ordered the new motor for that heating unit and so.
We're just waiting.
Yeah, initially he thought it was gonna come in yesterday, obviously. It didn't, hopefully today.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's gonna come in today. I don't know, I'm hoping.
She's great.
I'm hoping it's coming in today and we knew that it was gonna. This didn't I get attached because I didn't get it until Friday and then I forgot to send it out, sorry, and I didn't think about it yesterday. What that is, and I just hadn't in my eye, but that's okay. You got, they'll ask you about it.
Okay, this is the same thing we do each year.
This is the same thing we do every year about you guys saying that, whatever that says there.
We're exempt from the county merit system.
Yeah, I bet that you're supposed to make sure that everything is still in line with.
Certified that we are in compliance with the principles and criteria.
Yeah.
And we are, right? Yes, Boy Scout Sider.
He said Boy Scout Sider, so I'm just gonna go with that.
So the guy that got ran over by a stock truck, right?
You can't trust him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like to take action on this right now?
Uh, they want it back by January first and so I didn't know if I'm gonna be meeting with you guys and that's why I thought I'd just bring it with me, even though, but it's, we've signed it every year for.
And that the last year.
Yeah, last, yeah, we've signed it every year for.
The four years I've been here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hasn't come back to bite us yet.
No.
Do we need to make a motion for that? I move we assign the, what's called the CDHS Certificate of Compliance.
I don't need it for anything, sir.
No, I was looking to see if any of them look better than the other one.
I'm trying to move forward, I'll second the motion. Uh, move to second it to sign off on the, uh, CDH certificate, certification of compliance. I'm assuming CDH is Colorado Department of Human.
Uh-huh, and I'll fill in Custer County down there, I'm sorry. I, I'll type that in.
So, uh, he can sign one he's got there.
Yeah, he can sign.
Yeah, I wondered about that. Is this for, is this for twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen?
It's for two, twenty nineteen.
Okay, alright.
I, I said that in the motion.
Yeah.
But it was quiet.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Uh, today would be before.
Maybe that hard copy.
I'm gonna.
Or you gotta go, you go fill it and fill it out.
I wanna finish filling it out and then I'll give, I'll, I make her a copy.
But we don't need to sign it?
Oh, no, no, sign it. You just sign it, but I'm gonna, right here, I'll type in Custer, so I, and then I gotta put a check mark there and da, 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 da. But no, you sign it for me, okay?
Yeah.
And then I'll give Kelly a copy of it.
Okay, gotcha.
So that she has.
Put it in the vault.
She'll put it in the vault, she'll lock it up in the vault. I don't know whether it's a cap. I wanna know, I wanna see where you're keeping my things, okay? Probably under a.
That will cost.
They have a claw, yes, they have a claw of it right here.
Yeah, probably in a.
Yeah, that's right.
Little box stuck somewhere and you don't really know where it is.
It's an extra ballot.
Yeah. We're gonna have the chads clinging, hanging chads.
Hanging chads.
Yeah, that's where they are, okay, as long as we know, we're good. Okay, so, we have our lovely little thing here, which we're doing just fine on, if you look at it, so we should be okay. I have been worried about my admin because of so much training that we have going on. And in December, um, we have a two-day training, so we'll be up at a motel in Colorado Springs. We, it was gonna be in Springs and they moved it to Canyon, so we were gonna drive and now they moved it back to the Springs, so now we'll be in another motel, so that'll be two nights of a motel, so. And then, uh, we placed two children and they're small children and they didn't have room here in the county, so they're out of county, but the judge ordered, since they're small, visitations four days a week for two hours at a time.
No way.
So, we are having to travel. We tried to set it up, they're in Fremont, we tried to set it up with the Visitation Center in Fremont. They wouldn't do it because they only do one hour blocks because they are so busy, they can't do two hour blocks, so we.
Can't schedule two one-hour blocks.
I know, that's what we thought too, but no, they won't do it. So, we are traveling, um, down every day to Fremont to do these visits.
Do you have kids down?
No, the kids are in Fremont.
So you're just supervised?
Yes, at first we were bringing the kids up here, so we went down, put the kids up, had a two-hour visit, took the kids back down and came back up. That's too much. Yeah, and we don't like transporting the kids, especially on these nasty roads, and so now we're just going down, parents are going down and we're meeting, um, down there.
Parents go with you or on their own?
No, on their own, and we're doing it that way, but yeah, it's, it's a lot. So, so you're gonna see some stuff with travel.
So you say "we," you mean one person out of your office?
One person out of my office is going, so.
And where are you meeting?
Right now, we're meeting at McDonald's because it's working well because they have that little play area. Because we couldn't figure out where to meet with them, cause we couldn't do it at the Visitation Center.
Judges' Chambers?
Yeah, Judges' Chambers. We tried to get that, um, when we found out we can only get the business Visitation Center for one hour, we tried to get the judge to say one hour, he wouldn't do that. So, there we are with that. We have court on December eleventh, so we know for sure we're beginning to be doing this until then.
Bless you.
We, we can't do anything else with it.
Right.
You gotta do it, you gotta.
Yeah, this one was not good, so we'll see what happens then. So anyhow, you'll probably see the admin next month will be more, okay? Just giving you a heads up.
So tell us ahead of time makes it okay?
Well, I don't know.
Cause I'm gonna try that if it works.
I don't know, I'm just, you know, I'm just giving you a little bit of. I'm just, you know, I'm just giving you a little bit of warning there.
Yep.
This is the stuff that happens to us. And we have a kid right now in P Y C that we're waiting for a bed. And when that.
Public use center.
Thank you.
And we're waiting for a bed. And when that opens up, then we're gonna put him in a place called Third Way. And that's gonna be, it's a residential treatment center, so it's gonna be expensive too. But we don't, we're just waiting for the bed.
Where is that at?
In Denver. We have another kid up in Denver. So that's kinda good because then we can, when we have to do our monthly visit, we can just.
Do both.
We do them both. And so, yeah. So anyhow, we're on the road a lot. But anyhow, that's all we can do with that.
Who does that?
Stacy does the visits and if she can't do them, I can do them. Right now, uh, for the supervised visitations, we have, we have case service aide doing that. And that's going fine. It's going really well. It's just, it's a lot of travel. But, okay.
So your O A P's going down?
Our O A P is just, yeah, it kinda hangs in there. We, little down, little up, but yeah, it stays kinda steady there. So that's nothing. Um, leap, um, hasn't, the numbers you're seeing for November and December, well, this is for October anyhow, but those are last year's numbers. And so we done 127 last year and right now for the first payment, we did 115. We had a lot more cases that we denied for over income or they're not vulnerable. So those are, but you'll see that next month, those will be on there, okay? So yeah, that first payment was out there. And then our Medicaid transportation, that's just always a lot, but it's, eh, it's not too bad this month. Down a little bit, which is fine too. C S B G.
Now, what's the last number you have there? Fifteen hundred and twenty-six dollars in October on Medicaid?
I have fifteen hundred and twenty-six fifty.
Okay.
Yeah. And then our community service block grant, we didn't have any in October. I have some in November, but I have money, so that's good.
Which one was that?
The community service block grant.
Typically, what's that paid for?
Rent, utilities. We've paid for appliances, like if a water heater goes out, something like that, we'll do that. It's, it's, it's an emergency type thing.
Hot tubs, hot clean.
No, we don't do hot. No, we don't. Two hot tubs. Are you related to Jackie? Jackie was in there a minute ago trying to squeeze money out of me. And I said, no, not doing that, Jackie. It doesn't fit my program area that you're trying to get money for, so knock it off. Okay, yeah.
Gotta try.
Oh, yeah, you just gotta ignore her. I don't, what the heck happened on the energy? Oh, so the reason Energy Outreach looks so funny is 'cause we started a new year. It started in October. And so I have one payment there.
Does that include wood for fire, heat for fire?
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
Yep, anything that is heating. We do wood pellets, that type of stuff. We do all of that. Okay, ducky. And then our food assistance here, we're up a little bit. We always see that towards winter because of the number of households, because that just happens in wintertime. And then our T fab, which is kind of a strange thing, but anyhow, um, that just depends. It didn't make, I don't know, this month, we sent it to the, to the paper and it didn't get in the paper. I don't know what happened to it. So we didn't have as many people as we would like because it never made the paper, even though we sent it. So gonna make sure.
In the papers.
I know.
Not my papers.
No, in your paper. You got it in your paper. Yeah, I think. It was in the paper. They didn't get it in there, so.
'Cause when you say it didn't make it in the paper.
Well, I should've said.
I automatically assume it didn't make it in the paper of record. That's how I look at it.
No, no. It made it, I should've said, well, I don't know. It didn't make it into one of the papers. Okay, there, that's how I should say that.
If you put it in our paper of record and it doesn't get there and it's county business, that's different.
Okay.
I think, don't you pursue that? I mean, that's what we've.
I would.
Yeah. I don't know why it didn't get in there. We sent it. I don't know what the deal was with the one paper. So I'm gonna try to make sure that we.
Good.
Well, send it and then we'll call and make sure they got it and da, 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 because.
Shouldn't have to.
No, I, no, I shouldn't have to because usually they just get it and.
What are you, what are you saying?
How big is? It's, it's, they do a little article that says we're gonna be having commodities on this day. We kinda.
Sort of like a press release.
Yeah, yes. And then we also tell in there what we're gonna, what we.
You read it.
Uh, Stacy has. We just, we just have like a little thing that we do, blurb, and we just have it there. And then we just fill in the different things we have each month. And then we send it out so people know what we, what we're gonna be giving out that time. And so we just have it already ready to go and then she just fills in what we have. And then we electronically send it to them. So I don't know what happened. Okay?
Yep.
So I think that's all that I have.
I have an awful little question.
Okay.
What do you do with folks who come in, are in need, but don't fit any of your programs? Do you help refer those folks?
Oh, yeah. We refer them to like the, any, any organization that we think that they will fit into.
Good.
And if we have somebody that's over income and we can't help them with rent because my, that C S B G does have an income deadline.
I understand.
Then I refer them to the churches, like Catholic Church, the Methodist Church, um, I think Baptist Church. If they're a vet, we refer them to the veterans. So we just, yeah, we try to make sure that we can help them in any way, shape we can.
Thank you. You're welcome. I know you did that just recently for a fellow that I've been working with.
Oh.
I really appreciate, I knew you couldn't help them, but you gave us good suggestions.
Yeah, we do, we, you know, we, and we have that resource guide, so we make sure we hand out a resource guide to them because sometimes there's stuff on there that, you know, they may not be able to get in our county, but it's offered in another county. But we always do referrals to everybody.
Thanks.
All right. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Thank you. And Kelly, I'll get that too. And then you and I will go into the vault. I know. It'll be scary in there.
Yeah. All right, thank you, ma'am.
I don't know if you have the clearance to go into the vault.
Well, I go into the vault.
Not unaccompanied. You won't let her go in there unaccompanied, will you?
I try not to.
I do, yes, because I have my food cards out there.
So you have a pass to get in there?
Yes, I do.
Unaccompanied. Gentlemen, I would ask that you, we just quickly, uh, look at Alyssa's report, uh, public health. We started on that. And so if you have any questions, I can pass those on to her.
I read it last night. I glanced through it expecting to hear her today, but I didn't see anything and it jumped out at me.
Commissioner Candy?
No, I haven't seen that.
Good.
Definitely.
And Ms. Brenda let her know that we voted to authorize her to sign the lease agreement, so she's aware of that. So, um, okay, if you don't have any questions, we will move forward. Mr. Swart.
He had a run across street, gets up.
Sounds like it's time to take a cup of coffee.
Might be a time for a break.
Let's do that.
Take about a three-minute break.
V S O.
All right.
I'm here.
You are.
Morning.
All of you.
Morning, how are ya?
Good, morning.
Good, how you doing?
Good.
You hustled your rear end right over there and back real quick.
Yeah, I did. I left one.
No, it's not cold, it's chilly. It's been five winters in Korea.
This is, this is not cold.
This is not bad.
Is it cold in Korea?
Had one month, it barely got over zero for a whole month.
Oh.
So, relative, you know, context. Okay. Work copy. Now, I didn't have time to get the run of those before. So I put those on the cover. Kind of my short agenda. Okay. For you.
Thank you.
All right.
We finally met Jim Reed, I understand.
Yes, I did. He's coming in this afternoon.
Very good.
We definitely have to, have to talk. He's got, so good.
Trying to get him in here for a long time.
And, and thank you for that. Because what we find is particularly Vietnam vets is they don't know what they don't know.
Right.
And we've been seeing that for four years. I've been here the most is we've done a lot of claims, disability claims for Vietnam vets who just don't, haven't kept up on the aging orange issue. And they've missed out on years of compensation. So, so that continues. So thanks for that. I appreciate that. Anyways, get on the subject. Um, monthly report, let's go ahead and take care of that. Your first monthly report, the numbers, um, shows a phone call, 62, office is 55 with the holiday. I went back to Tennessee for Thanksgiving. And then I had a surprise where I had, had a third heart cat scheduled as my cardiologist wanted to go back and look and see just to make sure everything was looking good. And I got a total clean bill of health. It says, it's as good as you could expect. It says no damp, no visible signs of any damage to arteries, heart, nothing. Last thing precaution, he wants me, I'm gonna do this Friday, get an echocardiogram. Just, uh, just, we just wanted to do a good screen, just to make sure that we're on track. So that was good news. So bruising, that's part of the game. So, um, any questions on the report? Nothing? Next, I said this is always just to cert, do certifications for state, so the state sends the money. That's the main part.
Okay, I'll move we accept his report and we can discuss.
Give a second.
I'll second.
Move to second it to accept V S O report for November. Discussion, public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, V S O update, kinda gave you that already as far as my health goes. Um, and the other news is, as you've already heard, my house is under contract with the closing date scheduled for 26th of this month.
Heard that.
Thank you. And, uh, is that me?
Uh, no.
Okay. Sounds just like my phone. That's why, that's why I thought I turned you off. Okay.
So what's your plan?
Well, the plan is, uh, up in, and what, you know, I was still, we're still kinda in that limbo stage because they have up to Friday to object and so on and so forth. Well, five minutes ago, before I left here, I got the email with the list of objections, which are three minor, subject tank, we had that thing on our exhaust on the roof that collar's missing, I guess. And so it's three minor things. So we look like we're good to go. It is a cash deal, they're coming in. So I'll be given official notice probably about the end of the week. That'll be effective 31th December. Our, our timeline is to close the 26th of this month. And then, so I have enough vacation time to cover, besides the holidays, the last two weeks. And so my last working date will probably be next Friday.
And so your, your recommendation for interim is still the same?
Still the same. I have spoke to Roger already and he is still willing to, to do that. More than happy to do that, to come up two days a week. He'd like to do two, 10 work days a week. Um, and then he will also be available. It depend on who you hire and what their experience level is. If they're a greenie like I was, he'd be more than happy to come up and, and train for a while. And also, also with the, the way my situation's gonna be, um, I'm, we got a good price on the house, which is gonna allow me to, my plan is to take a six-month sabbatical. My full-time job for six months is gonna be get up, work out every day and get healthy as I can, okay? So I'll be available and I will maintain contact, you know, on the situation here.
So you're not moving right away?
No, we're moving right away. We're moving. Okay, we're moving this month, end of the month. So, but by phone, you know, I'll, I'll keep contact with, with what's going on. And once you, once I hear who you hired and their experience, I'll contact that VSO and let them know or her that I'm available to come consult for cases that we have going because we have quite a few cases that are either pending appeal hearings and those type of things. And then open cases for vets who are out there looking for medical documentation and so forth to come in to finish submitting their, their claim. So Roger's coming in next Wednesday is the plan, which is the twelfth. They spend the whole day going over all the cases and they get him familiarized and update notes and that kind of thing. Okay? So that's the way it winds up right now. All in the assumption that nothing weird happens with this deal, but I don't, you know, we, we had an opportunity to meet the buyers at the inspection, had a great conversation and they're really looking forward to moving here, so.
Did I give you back my work copy? My daydreaming or? I know you handed me one. You don't have it. That's all right.
Okay, well, I can give you, I can give you my case. Okay, that's okay.
It's the second thing that goes, Tom, and you can't remember the first.
Yeah, well, I can give you mine because basically I don't, you know, we're at number four. So anyways, I wanted to cover, cover a couple of things real quick and I wanted to make sure, so I actually typed up this statement to keep me on track. Okay? Because there's, there's a whole lot more than when I've got my statement that we could go over, but this is the, the bulk of the, the really main stuff. So I'd like to read the statement to you. I, I call the State of the Veteran Service Office. I like to talk about the state of the VSO by saying, we made a lot of progress over the last four years, almost four years, April will be four years coming up. So when I was hired in April twenty fifteen, the VSO was a part-time minimum service position with no budget for training, supplies, equipment, travel, well, basically no operating budget. My first day I walked in the office, the office was empty. I walked into an empty room was my first day. Okay? It had to be set up from scratch. Some of the things that we've happened over this period are office setup, the logo that you see, not this form, but on my business cards, that logo didn't exist. My, my wife actually created that, that logo the first few months. My background, sales and marketing, you know, badging logos have something to build around is, is huge. So, and there was no county logo for the VSO office. Renovate the office primarily, which was done with private donations from the community. Went from part-time to full-time, which coincided with new state funding, which has increased each year. Equipment upgrades, new printer was first thing we purchased in January twenty sixteen. The printer that was in there was four years old and matter of fact, it quit working the last part of December of fifteen, so, so timing wise. And we just, new computer and monitors were just installed in the last two weeks. Attend national training conferences, VA accreditation, which has led to VBMS access for claims and file access and for research and appeals, which is huge. This is probably the biggest thing going. Unfortunately, at the day I leave, that access stops, except Roger is fully accredited. So that access will continue. The accreditation access is to the person, not to the office. Okay? So that's the other big plus, having Roger come in twice a week. He can still maintain and keep track of until the new person comes on board. So, okay. Vet respect database, which is the state side of the house, which when we first started, there were sixty-two veterans annotated and there is now four hundred and eighty. Annual appointments on average have increased from one hundred and forty for twenty fourteen to where we're averaging around nine hundred over the last three years, five hundred something my first year, a thousand, broke a thousand my second year. Last year was just short of a thousand, this year about eight hundred and something. So VA service compensation annual amount has increased. VA report shows that fiscal year twenty fourteen coming into the county was two point five three million dollars, going directly to veterans for compensation for disability claims purposes. Fiscal year seventeen report shows we're at now three point four nine million. So it's almost a million dollar annual increase over the last four years. And twenty eighteen report won't be released until usually, let's say July or August each year is when that comes out. So I'll give you a better update there. Annual community workshops, three years we have done an open to forum type workshop this year, weren't able to do that. And then a VA town hall meeting was done last year, which included having the regional director come and take questions from vets here locally. We've gone from minimal to good, but there's still a lot of work to do. My goal was to have the best VSO office in the state. Things left to do to take it to the next level and this is kind of the, the sequence I've been working on. Priority would be relocate to a better equipped office to have more space, expand services and less interruptions for, for veterans, especially their PTSD vets. I've had vets who have walked out due to sometimes too much commotion coming in over there and it's taken me months to get them to come back. Okay, that's happened more than once. Proper classroom space, new location to teach and train vets on the benefits and other things that veterans can't actually do for themselves. Was one of my goals, to have a proper classroom for training and be able to teach five to ten vets at a time. Right now I do it one-on-one. Tele service for PTSD counseling, voc rehab. The VA is really pushing, they've got a lot of great things out there for tele services, whether it's telemedicine and tele, tele counseling. They just announced a counseling for voc rehab, vocational rehab. So one of the goals has, has been to have a space to be able to have a separate office or something set up. So vets, especially during the winter, I've talked to counselors who will tell you that our no-show rate increases for vets not showing up for appointments down the hill during the winter, which is understood. But especially our PTSD vets, if we could have it set up to where they can come in and actually schedule those appointments by tele, help type of thing that can be done. And that is available. There, there's still some glitches to work with, that's, that's, that's available. Voc rehab, same thing. Medical telehealth, those, at some point, my goal was to get with the clinic this year to talk to Lisa, new director and so forth about, about that, that situation. So, and also I still plan to try to get over and see Lisa before I leave. We've already talked a little bit, but not a lot. One of the things I think that the clinic might be beneficial to the clinic is there is a way for them to get actually approved to do compensation exams for the VA. So I don't know if they'd be interested in doing it, but that could be additional income. The VA pays upward to eight hundred dollars per exam. Okay? So that might be something that they, they could do some. They can't do PTSD, TBIs and so forth, traumatic brain injuries, but some of the other things that they could potentially do. Okay? Monthly VA regional office visits, I manage to get their visit once, sometimes twice a year. One of the things that being so remote away from the regional office is you don't, it's hard to make those contacts. We've made progress in that area, but my goal is at least quarterly to start getting up there. I went up in November, met, had, had, got this, spent a half hour with a gal who's a coach for the appeals team and that was very beneficial. And actually she gave me her phone number and email address to be able to inquire. And that's something that needs to be done. You realize you have VSOs who work at the regional office, DAB, American Legion, the state has one VSO there and so forth. So you, those vets who work with those VSOs, they have, they have contacts in that building and they have things that come up. They can walk down the hall and get clarifications and so forth. That's possible and I may be able to do some of that, but I still don't have the contacts at the level that my goal was. So these were some of the goals I had set for the office. I believe they are all possible across the state and the country. There are too many counties we sell for provide minimal service for veterans, some who have sacrificed more than most people will ever understand. Veteran Service Officer job is to be a navigator to assist veterans, navigate the complicated VA system for healthcare, claims, appeals, GI Bill, voc rehab, survivors' benefits, wartime pension, VA mortgages, death and burial benefits and state benefits. You're also an advocate for them to protect their rights and benefits and privacy. You are at times their only encouragement and support person, or just someone that is available, available to listen and provide empathy. When the VSO is fully funded and trained and has the right people skills, you can impact a veteran's life in a way that is life-changing. So in anticipation of leaving this month, I want to encourage the commissioners to stay the course and hire someone that has the heart to serve and self-motivate to learn and become the best Veteran Service Officer possible. Our veterans of Custer County deserve no less than the best.
Can you provide a copy of that to Ms. Brenda?
Yes, I can.
Good job. And that was a good thing to do and expected. That's a good report to State of the Union.
Yeah, so, so when you start hiring, really some of the keys that I would look for is background, customer service, people skills, those type of things. Someone that can write, that is proficient at writing. When you're putting claims together and trying to connect the dots for graders, how that is submitted and how it's written is very key. Also research background, someone that has desire, that, that love, that doesn't mind reading and complicated puzzles, that's the way, the best way to put a disability claim. Every claim is different. It's like putting a new puzzle together every time. And sometimes it requires an hour, a couple, a few hours of research and reading as these cases come in. And it, and it's a two-year learning curve to really get to where you feel like you've finally got a grasp of things. And then from that part, you go from crawling to walking to, and you start running a little bit. And so that's just the way I, I, I see it. I told people when I took this job, I thought I was jumping into like a three-foot end of the pool. When I got about twenty feet under, I said, I'm going to start swimming. And you swim hard and fast for, say, first six months of the year, a lot of time reading and studying, so, okay? So I will keep Donna informed of how the rest, next two weeks go, but it looks like it's good. And unless something comes up, you know, we'll, we'll be gone here shortly.
So can you recommend we hire an interim VSO in Roger Watkins?
I do. The opportunity is very rare to have someone like that available. He can come in. Like I said, he's agreed to come in next Wednesday if you okay it.
What's he agreed to, to hours wise, couple of days a week?
Two, two days, two day, two ten-hour days a week.
Two ten-hour days.
Yeah.
Think that's enough time to seat people? I mean, two, two ten-hours is fine, but why not three days a week to split it?
In my opinion, well, he, he still has one day a week that he's still the VSO for the Veterans Home down in Walsenburg.
I see.
And he's technically retired, so he can do a lot. You're much better having him two days a week than someone that knows nothing in five days a week.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
Just trying to maximize his time, so, to make sure he can, you know.
Well, he's coming from Rye, so he'd like to minimize that drive twice a week, especially during the winter, starting in January. So I, I don't blame him. I think if I was leaving in spring and most of the snow was gone, he might, might maybe, but.
So you're saying that he would come next Wednesday?
Well, next Wednesday is on his time. It's not a pay. He, he would just come next Wednesday to go over, he's volunteered to do it, but he would start then after New Year's.
Okay, so we're looking at, trying to fund this position after the first of the year.
Well, well, like I said, he, he, you know, the, the budget's there for a full-time VSO, so he'd be part-time until you hire someone.
Right.
And then, the money's there and then you'll, you'll, the good thing about Roger coming in, with him coming in, the other thing is important is realize that, okay, I'm good for the whole month, so, on, on books, so you're going to get the funding for this month. Every month that office stays vacant. If it stays vacant for a month, you lose that funding from the state. Okay? If he's in there part-time, at least you get half of what you normally get, so, so that's another plus. So, and, and the pay, the way, you know, the, the pay, the way it's budgeted, depending on the experience level, and I talked to Donna about this, now, now you got a range, you got, you got, the pay's now at a level that will attract some good applicants, I think now. Okay? I think if you send the, told Donna, if you send it to separation points at the Air Force Field, Fort Carson, so forth, you may get a young E seven getting ready to retire at forty, forty-two says, you know, I've been up there, I'll cut, boy, I was sort of bothered about living up there, but there's no work up there, you know? So the combination of a twenty-year retiree plus with the period would, would be attractive possibly. So I would, I would pursue that just to see if you're a good applicant pool. I would also send it to the National Association.
Can Roger do that?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and I can help with that.
He knows the context.
Yeah, and I can help with that also from a distance. So, and also through the National Association of VSOs, that can go up to them. You just never, you may, you may attract someone that's already done it for a couple of years and fully accredited, they come on in and boom. So just an idea, but, but more than happy to help with that also, get that announcement disseminated out. Okay? So, but if you could let me know, if, so I can call Rogers, so he can know for sure whether you're agreeable with that and as soon as possible, that'd be great. But those are where I would recommend. Roger's a great guy. He's, like I said, he's, he's got a heart for vets. He came back, Vietnam vet, came back from Vietnam, immediately started helping vets with their benefits when he got back from Vietnam.
When can you introduce him to us?
Well, he came, he came.
I know him, in this capacity.
Well, if you give him the okay, he's going to, I'll make sure, if you guys want him to come by on the twelfth, I can, I can set aside some time for that, that he'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Wednesday, sort of, on the twelfth.
Yep, Wednesday, the twelfth.
I'd like to meet with him and talk to him if you have the time.
Yep, yep, yep. He, he's going to come, he'll, he'll be, nine o'clock, he'll be coming, so, but he's planning on staying as long as needed on Wednesday. And it'll probably be all, all day with the amount of cases that we're going to cover and get some, so, okay?
Do you want to set a time or?
Yep, if you, you all want to set this particular time, I'll go ahead and put that in the books and.
I'd say to give you a chance to.
Ten's fine, ten works for me.
It's a ten AM Wednesday.
Yep.
It's well.
It's well.
Want to meet with us separately, is that what we want to do?
Well, I think we can just all three sit and meet.
Shoot the ball in here.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if you decide you want to meet with him separately, he'll, he'll be around, he'll be available all day. So, so if you want to meet him as a group, then if anyone wants to meet separately, he'd be more than happy to do that.
Let's try just last.
Watkins, W A T K I N S, so.
Do you want to wait to take action on the recommendation of hiring him as interim until after we've met with him?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would make sense.
It'd be appropriate.
To the next meeting right after that.
Although we've already met, but we're not going to have a mid-month December meeting unless we need one. If we need one, then we can schedule one, but right now we do not have one scheduled, so.
I think we can talk with you, though, and we can finalize it.
Well, starting till the first officially, I think we'd be fine, we could do it on the last day of the year.
Question for you, just, just a question, just curious, does the, and this might be a lawyer question, but is it, are you, are you allowed to approve something contingent like a sale of a house contingent upon meeting and satisfactorily, well, you know, type of thing? So I didn't know if that was an option.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Can I go back to specific item? First of all, let me tell you, I am, I'm so proud of the job you've done for this community and for veterans. I speak for myself, although I would suspect I've got concurrence on this, but we feel you've done an outstanding job. Sorry you had health issues during this, but you served our community really, really well and I appreciate that a lot. If you choose to follow this career again, wherever you end up, if you need something from me personally, I would be delighted to make a recommendation.
I appreciate that. I just, we're looking at Roger City, Michigan, and I just discovered there is a part-time office there currently filled, but the other thing I am going to do is, there's three ways to be accredited with the VA if you're a lawyer. They have their accreditation process, which basically is just paperwork. There's no test, there's no nothing. If you, if you went through law school, you can probably figure it out. Then the accreditation for VSOs working in a VSO position, but then there's, for non-lawyers, you can actually, and Roger is, is at what's called an accredited agent, so, which means he is accredited just as I am, but he keeps his accreditation all the time. He's not, even though he's, he's still technically in a VSO position at the Walsenburg Veterans Home, he keeps his access and he is available to, for, I mean, as long as he keeps his continued education going. And so that's what I'm pursuing, is I'm going to go ahead and get my credit agent status and take the test and so forth. The reason for that is, I guarantee it, it happens all the time. I can be in Walmart, I can be somewhere, seeing our veteran and we start talking, oh, you're a Vietnam vet, huh? Well, do you have diabetes or heart? And so I can actually legally, by being a credit agent, if I run across someone in the community, help them with their claim. The law allows you to do a one-time assistance to a veteran without being accredited, one time, and that's it. You cannot legally represent a claim more than once, but as a credit agent, even as a, I can do that on a volunteer basis even, so I do plan to pursue that.
In the last couple of weeks, we've looked at two veterans.
Yes.
I just wanted to know if you're aware of that Francis Burley and Gerald Anderson?
Yeah, I've heard, I haven't heard from the families.
Okay, I'll ask them to contact your office.
Yeah, I, yeah. And that's the other thing, a lot of times Art, Art has my cars and Art's been really good. Art knows about letting families know that if they are a veteran, if he's aware they're a veteran, he mentions me and gives them their, my business at heart, so, okay?
I wish you the very best in the future.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Good luck, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, if you'll provide that information with Brenda, I think that's valuable for us to have.
Okay.
And I appreciate it.
All right, no problem. Thanks for your help.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it.
You bet.
And I'll keep Donna updated. Really appreciate it.
Pleasure working with you.
Same here. Appreciate it. Hey, it's Tim, good luck.
Good, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, so I, I think along those veins, I at least need to revisit the budget, see where we were at, what we do salary.
That's why I wasn't ready to get anything right now. We need to take a look at this, we need Donna to go.
This interim position, so. Yeah, without having a mid-month meeting, which we can have if we think we need it, is it going to be right and fair to wait till December thirty-first?
We can work with Donna in the meantime.
Well, you know, considering what's going on, it properly would make sense to have a short one, just so we could take action, because this is such an important position in our community. I hate to just put it off, I mean, unless either you gentlemen are going to be gone?
No.
I just don't, I'm not sure it would be fair to an interim person coming in to let him know the day before, we want him to technically go.
We need to talk to him.
Even if it's just a short meeting, I would, I'd recommend we do one maybe on the, I don't know, twentieth or something like that.
Can't do it the twentieth.
Okay.
Twenty-first.
We're getting ready to drive down to Louisiana.
Okay. I'll have an airport board meeting, but that's not till ten. What about the eighteenth? Brenda, what are you thinking down there, back there? Are you even listening?
I am.
Okay. What would the eighteenth look like for you?
The morning is fine.
Actually, the twentieth, I'm looking at the calendar, I'm going to leave on the twenty-first.
No, twentieth would work for me.
Twentieth will be all right.
Nineteenth is a problem for me.
I'm going to do that too, so, twentieth will be all right.
I mean, I just, I don't want to shortchange this position. I think it's worth for us to get together, even if it's the only agenda item.
What's the eighteenth look like?
I'm fine with the eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm good with the eighteenth. Twentieth would be iffy, but I might, it's supposed to be here anyway.
I was planning on trying to meet that airport meeting on the twentieth is the only reason I'm asking.
And I would be there too.
What's the eighteenth then?
Eighteenth, ten o'clock.
Nine o'clock. It's at nine o'clock.
Do it, and then we can get it out of the way. You okay with that, Ms. Brenda?
I am.
I would move that we schedule another BOCC meeting on December the eighteenth at nine AM.
Second.
Moving second and schedule BOCC on December eighteenth. Just further discussion, you know, man? I would just say, let's make sure we do due diligence prior to that and be ready to, we would invite Ms., Mrs. Hobby in to talk about.
An interim VSO.
The possibility of hiring an interim VSO. We're not prepared to do that today.
Who, me either?
Good. So December the eighteenth, nine AM, we would need you to be there.
Okay.
And while she's here, since we may or may not need fish, I would like to wish her a wonderful, happy birthday Friday.
Too bad, I did.
Further discussion on the motion? Public comment? Hearing members proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. I guess if we were going to get any comment from the back, we would have. You're good?
Twenty is out for me, so, I just saw that.
All right, so the eighteenth at nine AM, we'll prepare an agenda and get that posted, obviously, and, and that may be the only agenda item, I don't know. But I think it's only fair that if we're going to do something, we do it before one day notice. Okay.[1667.12] But I think it's only fair that if we're going to do something, we do it before one day notice. Okay.
We could add the, we need to talk about funding the ads for that strategic plan, we could do a thing to, or actually we could take care of that. How do we want to do it?
Yeah, I don't know. Let's put that on the agenda for you.
Let's do it.
All right.
Yeah, sure.
Ms. Brenda, could you add an agenda item on the 18th of funding a newspaper press release?
Ads for, for strategic plan process, progress, status.
S brand, strategic planning.
Funding ads for?
Ads for status, strategic plan status, public notice.
And then we also talked about purchasing a couple of ads for Roden Bridge. Do we want to deal with that formally on the 18th? Did you get that, Ms. Brenda?
It's a full.
And I move, we limit the meeting to one hour. We're out of here, buddy.
Did you get that about Roden Bridge? Yes, yes, ma'am. You had your hand up?
No, I was going. Hiring interim VSO.
I just saw the tall. Okay, thank you. Any other staff reports? Okay, unfinished business?
I'm finished from earlier today about this nice lady that accepted, I got your little note. I hope you know that we have the three other buildings that are part of that, and the hours may change. Is she aware of that?
Good, it was 20 hours.
It's 20 hours.
The SO building.
And that would be, and she was good with it, and she's coming today, just not from 1 to 2 at some point, so I can try to get her.
Perfect, and the hours may change, we discussed that, we may change the number of hours, either more or less, depending on how the workload pans out.
Contingent.
And that was a question I had, if it would still be the airport and different things in the trap, because those were things that had.
Right, the airport, SNR and VSO, near port, I think was every other week, is that correct? And SNR, VSO, every week, or as needed, really, maybe more than that. We'll just, we'll play it by ear.
But yeah, she was, she was on board.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we were a little concerned that we didn't get all that specified early on, if that was going to be a surprise to her or not.
I had said that we had not.
Made a decision.
Yeah, that it was kind of up in the air.
So the only issue was the number of hours. It is part-time, half-time, contingent upon our review of what it really takes to do the job.
The hours could change.
Could change up or down.
And I had thought initially, only because like Debbie and Jeannie and I used to fill in on the cleaning when they would be gone a week. Four hours is not a lot, because the three of us would spend two, so that was really, so it's.
Yeah, that's why we need to see how it comes out.
And how much she was.
Good, we're just now breaking into parts.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. On any action items, public comment will be allowed. First item on the new business agenda is a review of the black and gray marijuana grant. Mr. Barley, welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, sir.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Nice to make eye contact with a handshake, thank you, sir. Not many people do that.
So, what happened with this black and gray marijuana grant is we didn't think we qualified this year. We didn't meet the criteria, but then we were informed that not many agencies were putting in for this grant, and they had a ton of money to get rid of, and that we should apply.
That made you think it didn't qualify.
Because we didn't have any grows really within the timeframe that made the criteria that they had the year before, where we did apply and got it. And so I applied, but the application process was different this year. It didn't require that we put a dollar amount. You basically just put your name on it and the agency name on it, and you send it in, and they decide how much they're going to award us. We don't have any idea.
That's kind of crazy.
But the deadline to put that in at the time was fast approaching, so I threw it in, I put it on the agenda to meet with the commissioners, and then I forgot. And so apparently they ran into Tom and said that he was, they were telling him about it, and it hadn't been presented. So it's already submitted. I got the thing in the mail this morning.
Submitted in on hold.
It is on hold, but they approved it this morning to proceed, to proceed forward. From Tamar, I got the following application. It's been accepted for consideration of a grant award by the Division of Local Government. So it's on its way, it just needs your okay.
Very good.
Does that mean we have to ask for a certain amount then?
No, they're apparently going to decide what rural counties get, and the way.
Any additional information to have them make a decision on how much to give us?
No.
No?
Couple hundred grand would be good.
Crazy, that would be pretty cool.
I'll go ahead and I'll move that we retroactively approve the black and gray market marijuana enforcement grant. That has been previously submitted, just to their funding.
Yeah, I'll thank you.
Moving seconded, would you stand for the word ratify in there, sir? Or retroactively approve?
Either one works for me. I think it's very clear either way what we do.
Okay, moving seconded to retroactively approve the gray and black marijuana enforcement grant, discussion.
I have something.
Yes, sir.
Page four of this application requires information from the local government attorney that is in compliance with the Tabor statement that's in there. And I will state that the county is in compliance, so just, they have that on the record.
Okay, do we remunerate you additionally for that?
Yeah, anytime I speak.
You'd get paid extra.
Yeah, there weren't any where ads.
No, we only pay for where ads is in there for us.
That didn't sound very legal to me.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, thank you, sir, appreciate that, good point. And so I would like to say a couple of things, one directly to this, thank you for doing that, appreciate that. The other thing I want to say that really doesn't apply to this, but I need to say it so I don't forget, thank you for your work on that VAO grant stuff. I think you do a lot of stuff that we as commissioners aren't really in tune to or aware of, because we see them come across our desk. But thank you for that work, appreciate it, but just wanted to throw that in there real quick.
Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen, on grant, yes, ma'am, public comment?
What is this paid for, Chris?
The, so in the years past, when we put in for the black and gray marijuana, anytime we go out on a, like a US Forest Service grow, it pays for overtime hours, it pays for uniforms if they get damaged. In the years past, we have purchased a Connex to store evidence in, those kind of things.
Only on federal property, though?
No, not necessarily. It's any marijuana that we do.
That's got to be related to that.
Yes, illegal grows.
Illegal grows.
Yes.
That's the criteria.
Well, we don't really have any legal grows in the county.
Well, what I meant was, other enforcement actions on marijuana being used correctly.
Yeah, not like if you pull over a car.
Too many grams, it doesn't meet the recreational requirement or whatever.
Usually grows.
But it can be either.
I mean, if you pulled over a car and they had.
Half a bale in the back.
Half a bale, maybe, but it's more designed for law enforcement to combat these illegal grows that are sweeping the state all over the place.
What's odd is that the grant has gotten less specific, and Chris can speak to that, because Chris manages this, and I'll echo what Tom said. Chris is the one that does these applications, and we weren't going to apply for this, but then they came back and said, hey, look, you guys have applied in the past.
Yeah, talk about unspecific, and they don't even tell you the amount, did they?
They're telling us.
Or why?
They're like, we don't care.
Just get it, we need to send it.
Okay, so they're going to give us money.
Right.
I don't believe there's a question about that.
We can buy a new Connex that we can sell, like the one we have now is full of marijuana stuff, and we can't use it for what we bought it for, so.
That's great, that's a good idea, that would be applicable, I would think.
It's $6.4 million, I believe, is awarded for this grant, 64 counties, but they're not really awarding to like Denver and places like that, because it's more for the rural, and so we have a good chance to get.
You could get a couple hundred thousand out of that deal.
Boy, that'd be awesome.
Bet you could.
Thinking a couple million.
We'll be happy if we get 10.
Based on my conversations with the Dola reps, I agree with Sheriff Barley. I'm pretty confident we're going to get some money, question will be how much, but that's not really the issue. Any money they give is going to help. But I swallowed and carried on, balled and kicked about overtime and all the other associated costs with these marijuana grows and subsequent enforcement, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, proceed to vote. On favor of retroactively approving the black and gray marijuana enforcement grant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Thank you for that, sir.
You bet. The only other thing I had was the VAO grant. We were approved for the 2019 award of $5,000. It steadily brought it down over the years. I started with 10, it was $7,500 last year, but we barely spent that, and if you don't spend it, you have to give it back, so. I asked for 5,000. I currently have one VA and one in training, really, but she's kind of iffy, so it's just a challenge to find volunteers for that. And so the one we have right now is, she's pretty awesome, but she's in her 70s, and it's not easy to go out 2:00 in the morning to domestic violence. So that'll be my push this next coming year is to get maybe at least one, if not two.
Hate to lose the opportunity, I mean.
Right, right. And so it really just pays for her use of her vehicle, I pay her an hourly wage. I wouldn't be able to do that at all if I didn't get this grant, and so we were already awarded that grant, and I got the paperwork last week.
And how much was it?
5,000.
And I believe Mr. Barley is under consideration for being nominated or accepted on the Victims Assistant Law Enforcement Board of Directors. So I talked to the district attorney, certainly may have went out on the limb, but I said I believe that the county commissioners fully would support that, so.
Appreciate it.
I don't know what the timeline is on that, but.
Haven't heard anything on it.
Yeah, neither.
I know Carol Custer was on it, and she's resigned, so.
Yeah, yeah, so as we talked the other day when we went to Denver, it is just nice to be able to go into state-level stuff and either know people or have people on those boards and have representation from country counties. So I think that'd be one other place that would be well represented, so.
I do.
Anything we can do to help that, let us know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd say I'm a little in the dark about the whole timeline and what all has to occur, but if you need anything to make that happen or help.
I certainly keep that in mind.
All right, sir.
Okay, I just bought us two brand new computers for sure.
Oh, good.
Vailed it? Oh, that's cool, yeah.
As part of that 5,000 or in addition to?
Well, that was part of the $7,500 from last year, to spend down to get it, down to those reserve balance, we bought two computers.
Good, good, good. All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry for the wait.
No, not at all.
Yep, good job.
Sure you were appropriately entertained while you had to wait, right? Thank you. Sheriff Barley?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, nice to see you. Take care.
Just a center meeting this afternoon?
Yes.
I didn't get the reminder out yesterday because.
I had it on my calendar, and then I know we had to be down at 3, down at Wentmore, so it was.
Should be pretty short, though.
Can you hang on for just a second, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
The public comment I want to ask.
Okay, let's get to that here. Okay, anything else, gentlemen, on your new business?
Nope, not for me.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Yes, sir.
Just to fit it in here somewhere, Shannon had asked a while back about the two towns that the county coordinating on an ordinance or there's ordinances for each entity regulating the growing of marijuana, and I haven't done anything on that yet. You still want to pursue that, I assume, or?
Yeah, well, I think we, we need, so I, I was told that Silver Cliff is looking at doing the ordinance, you know, because the state passed the legislature, or, let me start over.
Legislature.
Passed, or modified the law last year to regulate the number of plants that you can grow recreationally and medically in a residential property. And so statewide, it's 24, but can be reduced to 12 if you locally write an ordinance limiting to 12. And so the town of Silver Cliff is going to do that. A lot of other jurisdictions have done that as well, and so I just thought, before we end up where Silver Cliff has 12, and then maybe West Cliff doesn't do anything, and the county doesn't do anything, or vice versa, that all entities get together and we just stay on the same page like we have with many of the other ordinances, so that there's consistency, so that if we don't ham people up, you know, they don't even, they don't cross the street from one city limit to the other.
Is, do you know whether the town is even familiar with that, would have any interest in doing that?
I don't, I don't think the town is even, are they involved in it?
Well, they could.
The town of West Cliff? It hasn't, it's not on the radar, to my knowledge, the town of West Cliff.
Okay.
So that's, I sent that out to, to West Cliff, to Silver Cliff, and to you guys, because I think you get the email as well, and I just sent, hey, listen, this is going to be discussed.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, if you're interested in coordinating on that, I'm certainly happy to work on that.
That makes sense.
And who's doing it for, who's handling it for Silver Cliff? I don't even know who their town attorney is, now, who they.
Is it not Mr. Watkins?
I think it's Greg.
Greg is, okay.
I believe it is. Eileen would know the most about, just because she's the clerk, so.
Okay, would you, do you know of any other counties that have actually done this, you know, sheriff's offices?
Um, I, there are, there are several, but I couldn't tell you around the top of my head. I can find out for you, though.
Well, I just like to always get something, look, see what somebody else has done.
Well, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Work from there.
It's been written already, why agree with the law?
Yeah, that's exactly it. Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that up while you were here and let you know I'm willing to work on that, and I need to talk to you about the other thing, about what we can do about possibly forfeiting property that has been used for illegal purposes over and over. But that'll be a private conversation, I'll meet with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had.
On my list as well, to at least pursue that conversation, I certainly, as commissioner, would have, would support us getting involved in that. For some reason, I thought it was from 12 to 6, but it's 24 to 12.
Yeah, the most you can reduce it down to is 12.
Okay.
So, you know, you can allow up to 24, but you could, you know, because the state has said 24 max, but you can be, you can be more strict up to 12, and no, no less than that, though.
And that's to legally grow for your own recreational use without a medical marijuana license?
With or without.
That's what I'm saying, either way.
It's 12 total, doesn't matter what you.
So anybody can grow 12 plants in their home or anywhere else?
Well, really what it does is it, it falls into that conformity, so you have two adults living in a household, they're both allowed to grow six, that gives you 12. Because technically, you're only supposed to grow six medical marijuana plants at any one time, but they, they're basically saying, look, two people usually live in a household, so it's 12.
So they'd have to have two marijuana licenses?
No, not really.
Okay, what about recreational grow?
I just, yeah, it's recreation.
So you can grow up to 24 plants recreationally?
Right now, yeah.
In your own, in your own home? Anywhere else? Could you grow them anywhere else, do you know, or, has to be on your property?
Yeah, on your property, it's, and it's, when I say, you say on your home, it's on your property, so your residential property, doesn't matter if it's right here across the street, or if it's on.
So it could be next to the school?
35 acres, yeah.
24 is a lot, isn't it?
That's a ton.
24 plants.
Dude, even Oregon just approved 12 as a.
It's a lot.
24 plants that we saw in the last marijuana bust.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Oh, God, they were probably average seven feet tall.
Twenty-four, unbelievable.
Weren't those plants six, seven feet tall?
Oh, yeah.
Every bit of that?
It's just unbelievable.
Big around as this table crossed easily.
Oh, yeah, how far would you have bigger than that?
Yeah, each plant. Now, the typical person's not going to probably get that kind of growth, but it's possible.
Oh, yeah, it's not that hard.
So 24 plants, in my opinion, is a lot.
It's a lot.
And if I.
But you can't sell it to your neighbors like you can eggs, if you have more eggs than.
No, not legal to sell it, that's correct.
Yeah, you cannot sell, grow marijuana.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be in-home use.
That's a lot of use.
Can you, I wonder about transporting. I'm pretty ignorant about the whole marijuana industry, really, to be honest with you.
Oh, are you asking me about?
Yeah, could you transport, legally transport recreational marijuana that you grew?
So, so you're, you're only supposed to be able to, unless you have a license to, to grow it for sale, and you're only supposed to be able to transport two ounces at any time. So if you, if you, oh, here, I'll put it on me. So if I grow personal use marijuana in my house, and I'm getting ready to go to my brothers in Kansas for the, you know, for the holiday season, so I'm going to take along enough, you know.
Get me by, get me three dollars.
Two ounces.
Across state lines is legal?
Oh, no, no, you go to Kansas.
I was just saying.
I'm just saying, I'm saying for argument.
Right.
Point, that I'm heading out.
Right.
Two ounces is the most you're supposed to have on your person at any one time.
But not across state lines?
Oh, no, no, you go across state lines and you get a whole new.
Regardless of how much.
That's right, because it's illegal in Kansas.
Right.
Now that you know all about this, how many ounces does a seven-foot plant make?
Well, so it depends, that's a, so you can yield, I mean, you can yield, depending on the plant and how good you are, but a, a good plant.
Well, if it's seven foot tall, you're a pretty good grower.
You can yield four or five pounds.
That's a lot.
Pounds.
I can't imagine going through a pound in a year.
Good gravy.
They're going to sell that crap, they're selling it. It's crazy.
And now you understand why.
That's a, that's an issue of the voters not knowing what they were voting for when they approved this crap.
I would guess the plants that I personally saw would take up the area of those six chairs, each plant.
Pretty close.
I mean, in a circle, not...
Yeah, pretty close and about that tall.
And about that tall, that's right. And I'm telling you, you could see the THC glistening on the...
You walk by it.
The oil, I mean, the oil just...
Oh, just amazing.
It's like it's been sprayed with water.
Really?
Yeah, and they were close to being harvested, I mean, they were...
Yeah, I mean, and the folks that you, where you are, I mean, they're, they're very good at growing it. They know what they're doing.
Now, I don't think the average person could probably get that typically, but I don't know.
A little practice, right?
Yeah, but there was a lot of money tied up.
Because there's a lot of information out there now about how to grow and to be successful.
So I guess I would offer up a suggestion to my fellow commissioners that we put this on an agenda and have Mr. Barley come and present a case to us. I don't know that we have to wait for Silver Cliff and West Cliff.
Well, I just think that we have, and Mr. Smith can offer his thoughts. I just think that if you do it collaboratively, that way all the verbiage is pretty close to...
Yeah, you don't need it.
And the numbers the same and all that, so now...
So who would work?
In all fairness to citizens, you know, if you live in West Cliff and then you move up to Silver Cliff or you move two blocks away and now all of a sudden you're in Silver Cliff. If it's not the same, then you get hemmed up.
Well, who should get together from the two towns, Clint? Would it be you and to come up with some...
Well, I, if Shannon can, can find me something that's been used by other counties, you know, just the starting point, then I'd say, you know, Jay can take it and talk to the, you know, the town and see you. But I'm happy to take the lead on putting something together. It's probably going to be very similar to what's already out there and...
But you ought to have a discussion with the guys before we come in to ratify something.
If it's great, you know, and then I'll...
Yeah, I was just thinking, more along, why don't we take the lead and get the ball rolling and include those municipalities? Maybe we all three adopt it in the same timeframe. But somebody's got to take the lead and get the thing going, so.
I think we do it, as soon as you can give me something to...
Yeah, I'll work on it.
I'll contact them.
And really, it's from 24 to, if we chose 12, we could do 24 to 18.
Yeah, you could, whatever that number is.
But I would think 12 would be a number to start with. Chris, Prince? So, yeah, I mean, I like it. I think it's a good idea, so I would support that. Good, other public comment?
I would like to say that I have seen birds organizing with little signs out here. I don't know that it's going to go out to the street level where people can see, but I'm thinking that there's, there may be a coming protest.
Okay, let me tell you who is responsible for that and failed. That's why I'm taking this as a personal affront. I was supposed to fail the bird feeder. I don't even know where the bird feet is. Ow! But I will look, because I know that that is empty.
It's a personal affront, huh?
Yeah, personal affront, not an attack. And as you probably know, but you may not, our flag will remain at half-staff for 30 days. Bush is passing, so that's federal request is at 30 days. So we are at half-staff and will continue to be that for the next 26 days, I believe. Anything else, gentlemen? Public comment? Any other public comment? Yes.
What is our stance or what are we going, are we going to do anything? Or are we going to review, suggest the Werf No Code enforcement policy? Are we going to continue thinking about one?
We got to look at it and then...
Yeah, that's something I'm just getting started on.
We need to see what is going to set down the road.
Yeah.
It's something we can look at.
It's something to work with Jackie and see if we can somehow get the sheriff some of the things involved there also.
I just wasn't sure where the status of that was.
And we do have an ordinance, I'm sorry, an ordinance on tomorrow for review that if it ultimately passes, then Shannon's involved in enforcing it. So I don't know if you've seen that or not yet, Shannon.
Um...
But it's just beginning tomorrow.
Okay.
So Brenda consented to you.
I know it's on the, the agenda and I do believe Brenda consented to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I started in on the sample document from Werf No County, but didn't get very far before I got interrupted, so.
Well, that's a project that would take several months. At least would be my anticipation to put something together for possibly regulating some what we are commonly called public nuisances. And also, I kind of, I need to have a private conversation with Shannon to see. I know he's been frustrated on the inability of getting any kind of forfeiture actions going against some properties, so we'll talk to him about that as well.
Yeah, I did some more looking into it too.
I'd love to see that come for the commissioners if and when it's appropriate, because I'm all in on that.
Yeah.
Just, yes, one other thing, if I may, just kind of separate the gentleman that we've had multiple communication with, I've forwarded you multiple more emails to the...
Yeah.
I just, is there any action that we need to worry about?
No, and I just...
What the stance we're taking?
Shannon, he shared one with me today that his office has got. It seems to me like this, our strategy of not responding at all, not acknowledging we've received, it seems to be working. I mean, he had threatened to take, he was on the verge, was going to be filing new civil rights complaints against sheriff, that hasn't happened yet.